Alright, it's six o'clock on December twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. A lot of ones and twos in the day today. So, this is the regular city council meeting for the city of Holiday Island. Let's, we'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes, you wanna call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Gumas here. Councilmember Elwood?
Here.
Councilmember Graves?
Here.
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Pittman?
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor? Alright, I declare a forum. Move on to approve the agenda. I wanna make one minor change in the agenda. Under the new business, I wanna move Resolution two thousand and twenty one oh twenty nine ahead of Resolution two thousand and twenty one oh twenty eight. Because in oh twenty eight, we're transferring funds into an account that wouldn't exist yet if we didn't pass the other resolution first. So with that minor change, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Linda, approve.
Second.
Linda made a motion to approve, Linda seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. We, Wes distributed minutes from the regular meeting of eleven eighteen and the special meeting of eleven thirty. Any discussion on the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve if the minutes is submitted.
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Jerry seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or in memoriam? I think it might be noteworthy to mention that the county tax collector, Kay Phillips-Brown, passed away yesterday morning from cancer. She's been battling cancer all year, and she did pass away. So the county board, I guess, I guess the county board, that's an arbitrary replacement to be appointed to fill over her role.
Whoa. It sounds like somebody. Somebody just flushed something.
Alright, we'll move on to reports then. Standing committee, financials. Wes, you have any comments on the financials?
Uh, no, I don't. I just, I don't have a copy along with me either. I forgot that. Any questions?
Does anybody else have any question?
I reviewed them.
I just got the report on our sales tax. They'll be distributed this week, and I think it was twenty one four, which is more than the budget.
Okay. We, we're close to the end of the year, so it'll be interesting to see how we fare compared to what we thought we were gonna do at the beginning of the year, starting with no history or anything to go by.
And no money?
Yeah, and no money. Uh, we did get...
I've been figuring, I think it's gonna play out, even though we didn't get any turnbacks for the first three months, I think we're probably gonna be
Pretty close, boy.
About ninety-two percent of the budget on the revenue.
Okay. I think in the last meeting, we agreed that we would approve the financials before they get posted on the website. So I would entertain a motion that we approve the November financials.
Can we approve?
Except, I think.
Or except? Except. Alright.
I make a motion, we accept the financials through November, is that right?
November, yeah.
Second.
Jerry seconded it, any discussion?
I have a feeling I already posted it.
All in favor, retroactively say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Alright. The next on the agenda, special committee's broadband grant application. Did it get turned in?
Yeah, we, we're involved in two of them, both of them were turned in. Uh, I don't know the timetable of when or if they'll be approved. Uh, but anyway, uh, once we got that letter from you, we used it to build grants and, uh, so we're, we're in the, we're in the hopper on that. Uh, not specifically broadband, but the Arkansas Economic Development Commission had a online, uh, meeting, not meeting, but seminar on, uh, community development block grants, which generally are for low to middle income, uh, cities with low to middle income populations. But there are certain programs that are eligible for grants that, uh, they declare senior citizens as LMI regardless. So with our age, median age of sixty-four, there would be some of those community development block grants that we'd be eligible for. So some of them are like blighted areas in the city to clean those up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, water infrastructure. So anyway, there, that's down the road, but anyway, but I sat in on that, was pretty fun.
Okay.
Hey Jerry, with regard to the, the one that Rodney was working on, those grants, do you still need the survey posted on the website?
No, I was gonna mention that to you, we'll take that down. But you know what, though? They, they may look at it, continue to look at it when they're considering those grants.
Okay.
Because, uh, when, when I went to the meeting a couple, three weeks ago, where the state, the guy with the straight state contract, he had slides that showed significant, uh, gaps in, in our map compared to like Eureka and Berryville, who hadn't done that exercise. And it, you know, anytime somebody does, completes that and does a speed test, it plots it on the, the map, uh, color coded, uh, I can't remember what.
So they can continually get new versions of the map.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have, I think, uh, I think red meant you had poor, uh, or no, and we had quite a bit of red, so we can just color that whole map red. Improve our chances.
We do need to keep pushing that because, um, I don't know how, how many of you, or if any of you get this Arkansas Business Magazine, it comes out every, every week. And this, this week's publication had another glossy, uh, almost like a book, little book, um, all the, all the cities in Arkansas that apparently paid, they have a page in the book, and there were a lot of them. Not all of them, obviously, but a lot of, a lot of, um, a lot of cities had their, their page in there, you know, and why, why, you know, my city is the best kinda thing. And they're really pushing the work from anywhere thing. And, uh, I mean, every city in Arkansas is pushing that work from anywhere. And they'll, you know, they'll have pictures like, uh, like, um, where was it, somewhere down around Hot Springs, where they have the Washtetaw Trail, the really, really long biking and biking trail. They have a picture of somebody on a mountain bike, you know, work from anywhere. So they're, they're pushing it. If you don't have good internet connectivity, uh, then we're gonna lose out. Planning Commission report?
The Planning Commission met last Tuesday to finish its first pass through our model regulations. Uh, we started out with a document that had a hundred and seventeen pages, and we were working with a version that had sixty-five in it. After going through the first flush and taking out the notes and the text that we deemed unnecessary and references, we're down to fifty pages. So that's a good improvement. Um, Linda's working on gathering data so we can build a chart for our zoning map to make that process simpler. It'll be based on the unit block and lot, so we can make a table to use in public mapping. And we need yet another meeting to hash out some of the details that I'm finding as I go back through this thing. There's a, probably a workshop, it's gonna take a couple of us, it won't take the whole group probably, and, uh, have a, a public meeting to do that, but go through some of the details, like not only the map, but to talk about the zoning districts so that they line up with what we have in our building code. The concern I have with that is that the building code has commercial as well as residential. We didn't put, uh, we didn't put a lot of time on the commercial stuff. It's been filled a lot of it, so I think we can define it, we just may not have all the rules that go with it, so.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I didn't spend much time on it either because, you know, the commercial activity and new construction, at least in Holiday Island, is probably limited based on the fact that there just isn't any land to do any commercial development on.
I think we need to go at least as far as to say, this is what commercial activity is, so if someone wants to do it in residential, we can say, no, it's commercial, that kinda thing. So that's all I have for report.
From the feedback or the input that I've, I've been getting from residents and property owners, there's only one thing they really care about in the zoning ordinance, VRBOs, BNBs, we gotta get control over it, nobody wants them next door. There's more and more of them going in. Um, Fayetteville, there was an article in the Sunday Democrat event, um, that Fayetteville's doing some studies on that path. And they're doing things like requiring sprinklers in, in, uh, you know, if you're gonna be renting out your property, it has to have sprinklers and all, you know, things like that. So, you know, they're not making it impossible to have a VRBO in a residential area, but they, they're making it a little bit more financially challenging.
Why do you, why do you think that, I mean, they've had nightly rentals at Holiday Island forever.
Mm-hmm.
Why are we, why is the picture changing with the, when they, the BNBs or whatever, their BNBs?
What's, what's driving the change?
Yeah, just...
The internet?
No, I know, but why are, why are they so opposed to them? I mean, it's been nightly.
Because...
People have nightly rentals forever.
Yeah, but it was probably like, you know, thirty or forty homes being rented out by local companies that were managing it. Now it's managed from afar by a computer, and there's two hundred and ninety-six of them or something like that. So, and more coming every day. I get calls all the time from people that wanna buy property here and, uh, and wanna know what, what's on the horizon for VRBOs.
I think, yeah, we need to take advantage of, you know, I read an article a week or so ago where Rogers changed their method of taxing BNBs and rolled it in with the hotels or motels or something.
Well, I, I apologize for getting myself off track here.
We need to have that on the agenda sometimes, that, that's a pretty serious issue.
Yeah. I didn't wanna turn this into a planning commission.
We've had more sessions.
So, but anything else, Linda?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks, thanks for all your work.
Appreciate it.
And we will have to get back together and scrub that and, and try to get that passed.
Are you talking about another meeting before the one we accept?
Uh, probably, you know, I'm, I was further along, I guess, going through it than I thought I was, that another work session with one or two people, maybe we can get a whole bunch more done. I may have something ready for January eleventh that we can consider for adopting. The whole issue is, uh, issue is the zones and what we're gonna name them and how the document reflects them. That's the work that we have to do yet. We just went right past all of that, but we're doing our oversight.
And then Linda can come up with a map scheme?
Well, what we talked about doing is just having a plot map of the community and then reference all of those lots by, you know, lot block.
Yep, I think that's the easiest way to do it.
The statute allows us to do that, so.
Yep. Alright, moving on then to old business, under new business, um, we, it was pointed out that in the last meeting, we passed Resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-five, which was the resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Holiday Island to utilize state aid to street monies for the following project, the Holiday Island Road Overlay. And, um, I didn't call for a motion to approve, uh, to, to take the vote. So as a matter of formality, I will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-five.
Make a motion, we have, uh, Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-five.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have any, any discussion? Uh, I suppose we should redo the roll call vote on this one.
Okay, Councilmember Gumas? Aye. Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
That was aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So it passed again.
Yeah.
With a clowned action.
I apologize, I usually catch you on that.
Well, it prompted me to rewrite out my instructions, so we're gonna go through that. Uh, I'm gonna get this Robert's Rules of Order thing here nailed down if I have to keep running for mayor until I'm ninety-eight. But, um, I, I've come to one conclusion, and that's that, um, we approved the agenda. And the agenda has these items, these resolutions and ordinances on the agenda to be discussed. So there's no need for a motion to put that resolution or ordinance on the floor for discussion. It's already been approved for discussion. So we'll go right into, um, reading the resolution or the ordinance, calling for a vote, having discussion, and then voting.
So if I have a problem with something that's on the agenda, it has to come up with the agenda approval time, and I would recommend removing something, we have a debate, a vote on that amendment? Will that take place?
Okay. Yeah, if a council member doesn't feel like it's the right time to consider that ordinance, then the council can vote on it and take it off the agenda. Alright, so that gets us to Resolution, the next thing on the agenda is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-six, amending Resolution two thousand and twenty-one, uh, dash zero twenty-four on posting locations. Wes, do you have copies of those?
No.
Okay, I did.
I did not.
Right, I have them. So, would you read, just read the resolution, we don't have to read the whole posting notice?
Read the whole resolution.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh twenty-six, Resolution Adapting Policy for Publishing, Posting and Notification Requirements for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. This resolution replaces Zantow Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh eighteen and two thousand and twenty-one zero twenty-four. Whereas the City of Holiday Island must notify its citizens concerning official actions and regulatory decisions. And whereas there are many statutes with varying publishing, posting and notification requirements. And whereas the City of Holiday Island must comply with the state of Arkansas statutes governing how municipalities notify its citizens. And whereas locations for public postings must be approved and maintained by the City of Holiday Island, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. That, the City Council policy for posting and notification requirements shall be adopted, including approval to purchase bulletin boards and construction materials erect and maintain the bulletin boards and to establish the locations as permanent placement. Number one, adopt the Holiday Island policy for publishing, posting and notification requirements. Adapted policy details posting requirements for ordinances, financial statements and other official actions of the City Council as required by Arkansas statutes. Two, approval for mayor to expend the funds as data to purchase, construct, maintain and maintain five suitable bulletin boards at special locations in Holiday Island, on Holiday Island, Spurton and Grumman District, I said land or buildings. Three, approved locations for posting locations. The City Council designates the following five most public places within the corporate limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas, for the posting of qualifications upon town owned, that should be city owned, probably, and many bulletin boards. The, the bulletin board outside the entrance to the city office and one den on Woodstale Drive, Suite One oh three. Two, the bulletin board inside Sunfast Market Cafe on the north wall and one Forest Park Drive. Three, the bulletin board outside the entrance to the ballroom at Holiday Island Country Club, one Country Club Drive. Four, the bulletin board on the signed kiosk at the clubhouse, at one Country Club Drive. And fifth, the bulletin board inside the district office boardroom at one den on Woodstale Drive. That's adopted by the City Council of the Holiday, of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of December twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, with the one change, to change the word town to city, um, I would entertain a motion that we approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-six.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Linda made a motion to approve, Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? The change, the only change to the policy is the location of the one, we have a bulletin board inside the city hall office right now, which isn't really for all practical purposes, a very public place. And, um, we're moving into the signed kiosk by the provost on the backside, and we'll make it to make sure that it's accessible there. Uh, any other discussion? And I'll call for the roll call vote. Councilmember Gumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay, the Resolution two thousand and twenty-one oh twenty-six, uh, with the corrections approved. And I'll have to run new copies after I make that correction. Moving on to next, uh, agenda item is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-seven, Zoom meetings. Uh, I have a copy of that.
It's a long one. Hey, hold on.
Uh, I would entertain a motion that we, um, that we read this resolution by title only and during the discussion phase, Linda can explain what we're doing with this resolution, since it's pretty long, we did it otherwise.
I'll move that we put two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-seven on the floor for discussion by reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Alright, Wes, you wanna read the title and then?
Okay. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-one zero twenty-seven, a resolution revising the use of the digital broadcast application form.
Okay.
Zoom, right? Is the last word Zoom in the title? Yes. Okay.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion to pass to approve the resolution, and then we'll have discussion.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero twenty-seven.
I have a second?
I'll second.
Ken made the motion, and Linda seconded it. Uh, any discussion? Linda, you wanna tell us in a nutshell what's in the resolution?
Well, we started doing Zoom basically because Arkansas State Legislature passed a law, uh, in twenty, early twenty twenty, saying that if the governor declares a state emergency for the state of Arkansas, that a public meeting can be conducted solely by electronic means. And the public would have a right, as long as you make it available to the public, to have a right to participate in the meeting. And, uh, most, most governmental units started using Zoom or some other kind of application that does the same thing as Zoom does. And we've been using Zoom ever since we started, actually, at the beginning of the year. Uh, I don't think he declared the emergency until it was like, what, the May or something?
March.
March, March.
March says it.
It's in here, isn't it? It says March eleven. So, yeah, but we started doing Zoom as a matter of course in the beginning. So that was, that was in two thousand and twenty-one, though. I mean, so they passed that law in Arkansas in two thousand and twenty.
Right.
So, and the, and we were under a state of emergency when we started meeting.
Right.
So we did it that way. And, uh, so now the state of emergency no longer exists. Uh, it was, the last time he canceled it was September twenty-seventh. He allowed state of emergency to expire, and that's in this ordinance, it says that. And, uh, we've had all kinds of issues using Zoom from time to time, and it, we don't really have the resources to hire anybody to run the Zoom for us. So they have to be here in the meeting room. And, uh, so, you know, I've been doing it, and it hasn't been a great experience every, every meeting we've had. So, uh, I think, uh, you know, we've, we've discussed it in previous meetings that we kinda wanted to shift away from having to worry about the audience participating via Zoom and having to constantly monitor Zoom for audience participation. And the meeting room is open, anyone may come here and attend it. Uh, I think we also still want to, however, offer Zoom as a convenience and a courtesy to people. So if they wanna watch, or certainly it will be our means of recording meetings because we can get full video that way. Uh, and we will post those recordings after the fact, so people can always watch them after the fact. But the, this ordinance is gonna institute some different ways that we intend to use it going forward.
Resolution?
This resolution, yeah, thank you. And so, uh, one of, one of the new things we're gonna do is we're gonna make it so that the person that's running the Zoom meeting, I only have to start it and end it, basically, and record it and post the recording. Uh, we would, instead of having to admit people manually, like we do today, we're going to start putting a passcode out with the link. And whoever clicks on the link to join the Zoom will also have to enter that passcode. And then they will get automatically joined to the meeting. No one would have to do that manually. And so that's the first big change. Um, it's, I think it's on like a six or seven digit code, but it will be, you know, put everywhere we put the link, so. put everywhere we put the link, so it shouldn't be that hard for people to do. Um, also, uh, we're going to,
It'll be in broadcast mode, right?
Yeah, we will, we won't be monitoring chat or paying any attention to chat.
Will it be disabled?
We can't disable.
Can't disable it?
I don't believe so. I haven't found a way to disable it. Uh, you know, it's there if you want to look at it later, but it's not going to be a personal meeting.
Will they automatic, au- automatically be muted? Can't do that.
I'm not sure I can automatically mute. I might have to go and mute them, but I'll see if that's possible. I, I have a hunch it's not, but I know there are some meeting facilities that do automatically mute people. And I'll check into that because that would be ideal. Uh, but we're going to use it like it's broadcast, council. We're just recording it, uh, where people can watch live. And the chairman will not solicit any comments from the participants on Zoom. If people want to comment, they will be encouraged to come in person to the meetings, come up with a comment, or send them in beforehand, you know? Uh, or they can be there here. But we aren't going to take them live over Zoom. And, uh, you know, we'll end, at the end of the meeting, we'll just wrap up the recording and then we'll post it. So that's about it. Any questions?
Okay, so in kind of in a nutshell, it'll be an opportunity for people to still observe proceedings. Um, but, um, it, it makes it official, I guess, that, um, Zoom is not a requirement for us to have a legal meeting. There was a question about that as to whether or not it constituted, um, a legal meeting if Zoom didn't work. And, um, and it frees up a council member to participate in the council meeting as opposed to being the Zoom meeting manager, so.
Still also have an audio recorder.
Right.
Yeah, I think we'll do that as a backup in case too. And also I will point out that we, we passed a similar resolution for the planning commission, uh, last week. We're going to do both meetings the same way.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
I would think it would be good if you could automatically mute it because I was on a meeting a week or two ago where there was a lot of people, I think it was more, a hundred people or more on, might have been at late meeting. And someone had, in there a while ago off, and they were talking, someone was in their office, they were talking business.
Dogs barking and, uh, and all that. All right, uh, well, Linda will look into that. Are we ready for a vote? Um, last roll call vote.
Okay, um, Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor of Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Resolution twenty-one oh twenty-seven.
Oh, and this will want to affect the next meeting we do.
Yes. Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-seven is passed. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-nine, establishing a general re, uh, fund reserve. The reporter's going to read that fairly short, uh, I don't want to read the whole thing, okay?
Shall I read it?
Yep.
Resolution number twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-nine. A resolution establishing a general fund reserve for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, will from time to time have surplus funds at the end of fiscal years. And whereas the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, will from time to time require funds to meet emergencies and unanticipated expenditures. And whereas the annual budgeted revenue is based on estimates that made from time to time fall short of estimates. And where it is, whereas it is necessary for the City of Holiday Island to have funds and reserve to meet these unanticipated needs. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Holiday Island that a fund be established called the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas General Fund Reserve. We have further resolved that this fund be held in an account separate from the regular general fund account. And that transfers into and out of this fund will require a majority vote of the City Council. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of twelve twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-nine, establishing the general reserve fund.
I'll make such a motion.
That made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Want to wait till Jerry gets back?
Uh, we still have a forum.
That's true.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, uh, when you say fund, we're not, we got a general fund, we got a street fund, we got separate bank, this is not a separate bank account.
Yes.
Why? All you need to do is set up an account under the general fund, the reserve account.
I don't think you're saying not have a separate bank account.
Yeah.
Well, for one thing, I think there are issues the way the accounting software works. I don't see that working very well. It'd be complicated, plus the funds would actually not be segregated.
At some point down the road, it is conceivable that that reserve fund would have sufficient, um, money in it, that it would be invested in something. You wouldn't want to be taking money from the checkbook basically and putting it in.
The district using, the district using the same software and they've had reserve accounts for it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they do theirs. I know they have the same software, but well, I've talked to the software people and my last discussion was, it was several weeks ago now, but he didn't know about that. It kind of him and hot around whether he could do it. And I can't see, the way the software works, I can't see how you would do it because you, you put in the balance on the bank statement and then.
Well, you don't actually put the funds over there, you just say, I got, you know, this is a reserve seventy-five thousand and that's means that, that seventy-five thousand dollars out of your, your cash account is encumbered.
I just think of make things more complicated.
I don't know, but I think having three bank accounts would be more complicated than.
It's not really.
Okay.
There shouldn't be that many transfer, transactions to handle with the reserve fund.
It's just another one you got to keep track of and reconcile every month.
The district funds for a lot of their revenue to the C Ds.
Yeah.
And you've got all that, we've got all kinds of reserve accounts. And is it all in the same checking account?
Well, the, the way the software works, when I do the bank reconciliation, now I can, I understand what you're saying to do, but then I would have to finagle the bank reconciliation so that on the bank reconciliation, the balance didn't agree with the bank statement.
Seventy-five thousand dollars would still be in the checking account.
But I'd have to pledge the checking account balance when I put it down to reconciliation, so.
Okay. I'm not keeping the book, go ahead.
I don't, I don't know how you can truly encumber something unless it's in, unless it's in a different account.
Well, it's, it's a reserve.
Yeah, but it, if it's in the, if it's all in one account, it's easy to spend it. Just keep writing checks.
I wouldn't let you do that.
I would be honest with you, like a duck.
All right, is there any other discussion on, uh, uh, resolution establishing the reserve fund? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote if we get four ayes.
Okay.
That's a forum, but that's sufficient.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
And Councilmember Pittman?
He'd be a ex-encumbered.
All right, so, uh,
So.
The, yep.
It's passed, or is it?
Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-nine is passed. Now we can move on to the next thing on the agenda is, um, Resolution twenty-two-one oh twenty-eight. A resolution amending the twenty-two-one budget. Would the reporter please read it?
Okay.
That resolution.
Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-eight. A resolution amending the twenty-one, the two thousand twenty-one budget for the City of Holiday Island. Where the City of Holiday Island passed Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero zero five, establishing an operating budget for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. And whereas over the course of the year, the City Council has approved expenditures that exceeded the budgeted amounts. Whereas the approved expenditures did not cause overall expense spending to exceed the budgeted appropriations. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that two specific line items in the twenty-two-one budget will be amended as follows. Equipment from a budget of two, of nine thousand six twenty-one to an amended budget of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars. And for the fire department, from a budget of forty-five thousand eight thirty-three to an amended budget of forty-six thousand dollars. And additionally, be it resolved that seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from the general fund to the general fund reserve prior to year end. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of twelve twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-eight and then we'll open for discussion.
Make a motion we approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-eight.
Ken made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Linda seconded it, any discussion? No discussion, hearing no discussion, we'll, uh, move to the roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor of Mr. Mayor?
All right, Resolution twenty-two-one dash four twenty-eight is passed. Next thing on the agenda is Ordinance twenty-two-one dash zero one nine. The twenty-two operating budget. Um, I'm going to do something. Oh, uh, I would entertain a motion that we suspend the rules requiring three readings for this ordinance and, um, and read the, um, ordinance for passage tonight.
Read the third reading.
Yeah, read the third reading.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings?
So moved, second.
Roll call vote.
That was Dumas, Pittman, Chris. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Here.
Ah.
You can't vote here, only Congressman can do that.
So he abstained.
All right, so we've suspended the rules, so Wes, would you read the, uh, ordinance, please?
Ordinance number twenty-two-one dash zero one nine. Ordinance adopting the operating budget for two thousand twenty-two for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the City of Holiday, or the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive review of the pro, proposed budget. And whereas, in the opinion of the City Council, the proposed budget reflects as accurately as possible the anticipated revenue and expenditures of the City of Holiday Island for the two thousand twenty-two calendar year end. Whereas this ordinance being necessary for the City of Holiday Island to maintain operations effective one-one of twenty-two, an emergency is declared to exist and the emergency, and the ordinance shall be enforced immediately upon passage. Now be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, of that. Section one, the ordinance shall be known as the budget ordinance for the twelve-month period beginning on one-one of twenty-two and ending on twelve thirty-one of twenty-two. And that the attached budget documents reflect the estimated revenue and expenditures for the period. All revenues and appropriations are estimates and are subject to change during the budgetary year. Section two, the amounts of revenues and expenditures for the year twenty-two are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purpose set forth in the calendar year ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-two. Estimated revenue, general, general fund, two hundred eighty-five thousand six seventy-two. Appropriations for the general fund of two hundred and seventy-six thousand six twelve. Street fund appropriations of three hundred fifty-three thousand one eighty-nine. And the street fund, that was the estimated revenue for the street fund. Street fund appropriations of three hundred and forty thousand. Total estimated revenue, six hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-one. Total appropriations, six hundred and seven thousand eight forty-two. Since the financing of the operations of the city after one-one twenty-one is dependent on this budget ordinance being enforced at that time, an emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance will become effective immediately upon passage. Passed and approved by the City Council of the Holiday, of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of twelve one, two thousand twenty-one.
I don't think you have to read the attachments.
Right, there's a summary of the budget attached.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget. After which we'll have discussion and then we'll have to have a separate motion on the emergency clause.
I'll move to approve.
Linda made the motion to approve the budget, do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it, any discussion? Ken?
I have one question. Um, I, I, I have a question, but I, I don't think I want to talk about it, so.
Let him withdraw your question.
No, no, I mean, actually I have two questions, but. Do you want to talk about either one of them? No, I want to talk.
We need to guess.
Uh, the three hundred thousand dollars that would, uh, the, the, the state is giving us for the main.
That doesn't run through our city funds.
I know, but it's a gift. Do we not have to record that? It's a grant.
That's a grant.
That affects your grant.
I wouldn't think we would. What we're accounting, what we're accounting for is revenue and. What we're accounting, what we're got for is revenue and expenditures that we have. And we're not having, we're not dealing with that cash.
We have, well, it...
We're actually just paying them.
Well, if we accept those loans, we don't have to keep assets.
What was that?
We don't have assets? I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think the, at this point, we don't know for sure that we're going to get the grant. We're, we've been told there's a ninety-nine percent chance, but, um, it's not, you know, it's not official yet, but, um, you know, we can do more checking on that. And if, if at the time, if when the time comes, uh, it seems appropriate to amend the budget to reflect that somehow, we can pass a...
Okay.
A resolution amending the budget.
Okay. It's the only question I have.
I have, you know, I just noticed that just now, it's on, it's in your table, it's on the ordinance, the total appropriations is not added up correctly. You have an addition, I think.
On the cover sheet?
On the cover sheet. The order given on...
I thought it's two sixty-seven.
Sixteen, six twelve.
Two sixty-seven.
Six one six, six one two.
Yes, okay.
Total appropriation.
You want to make that note, and we'll, uh, make an amendment to the, uh... To the ordinance as read to reflect that correction.
Which one is it?
That was probably the total, was what we...
I didn't only change my...
I didn't change your numbers, I didn't change the total. Yeah. That's, that's what it is. Linda gave me some updates today or yesterday on what the IT costs are going to be. It was only a few hundred dollars, but, um, when I changed the face of the ordinance, I didn't... It was, it wasn't a formula set up in that table, so...
Yeah, it looks like...
Yeah, everything should, the attachment should be correct because...
The six one six, six twelve must have been right, because it looks like that, that's what this would put across to, I believe.
The attachments were from an Excel spreadsheet, so I'm sure the numbers are right there. It's just that it didn't, it didn't retaliate on the face of the ordinance. All right, so with that correction, is there any other discussion on the budget? Because now we'll move on to the roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the budget is approved now. Can I get a motion on the emergency clause?
Now, the ordinance already said we're requiring an emergency.
Yeah, but the law says you have to have a special vote on the emergency clause.
Some way.
Seconded.
We're down.
Jerry made a motion, then seconded it. Any discussion?
You have to post the budget. Are you going to the county or the...?
I don't know. I don't remember that.
You have to get it to the county.
I'll have to look that up.
I don't remember doing that last year.
I don't even post it to Secretary of State. I don't think it's the county. I think it's state law.
Let's vote on the emergency clause first, and then we can discuss that. Any discussion on the emergency clause? Roll call for the vote?
Okay, roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so the budget is approved, and the emergency clause is approved. And, uh, yes, we'll have to see what we... I didn't send the budget to anybody last year, did you?
No.
I don't think so.
You haven't, you haven't had a last one. It's getting in the year, I'm guessing.
We passed them.
No, but then we, we...
I mean, it has to be reported, it has to be published or reported in some place in, by February somehow, or... What, you want to check on that?
Well, yeah, I can. We don't, of course, we don't have any paper to publish it in.
No, we have to post it on our...
There, there is a required, if you, if you, you know...
It'll be posted.
Well, then you put it on the bulletin board, or, uh... I thought it had, I thought I thought it would have to go to the county, too, so I don't know.
I, I don't know, well, I don't remember doing that last year, but we can check.
Well, that may be a whole river of the old city of the county, but it has to be published someplace.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an ordinance, it has to be published. Okay.
Well, the budget has to be, and it, the budget is an ordinance, so, and, uh...
Last year, we did the budget with a resolution instead of an ordinance, but in, in checking with other cities, it, it, it was apparent that most cities use an ordinance to approve the budget. All right, moving on, next item on the agenda is the donation that I brought up in the last meeting, and I had, and I didn't know what it was for. So, you cold-hearted people turned me down.
I know what it was for, it was for escape to the Bahamas.
I called, I called the gentleman at the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in Harrison, and, um, he said that this two hundred and forty dollars goes into a pool of money that they use to offset the cost of writing grants and applying for grants for, uh, member cities, and, uh, offsetting, if necessary, some of the matching funds that are required from time to time on grants. It's, the number is based on population, so it's kind of like the municipal league does. And, uh, of those, two hundred and forty dollars. Now, it's not mandatory. If we don't pay it, and we ask them to apply for a grant for us, they would still do it yet. But I think if we're going to ask them to help us with economic development, we ought to give them their two hundred and forty.
For what it's worth, the, uh, resolution that we passed many meetings ago about you giving you the authority to appoint a mayor's task force, in that report, or that ordinance, it talks about, um, being involved with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development.
Yeah.
So, it's one of the resources that we want to tap into.
Okay, just for the record, I would like somebody to make a motion to, uh, go ahead and make this two hundred and forty dollar donation.
Yeah, I, I moved that we paid two hundred and forty dollars to the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development.
District.
District.
I'll second it.
Linda, Linda seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Wes, you can go ahead. And then the last thing on the agenda is a, um, living up to a promise, I think. A commitment I made, um, and I hope you back me up on it, because...
I hear what you're saying, I'm there.
Way back when, um, Bob started this whole thing, I'm glad you're here.
I think I, I remember.
The, uh, the, um, I think Board of Commissioners, when I was still on the board, voted to make the guard check go away at the front entrance, and that started a chain reaction of things. And, um, you know, Bob had, you know, supervised or, or pushed the issue forward to actually get it removed. And, um, so then, you know, we, we said, what are we going to do with the rest of the island? Because it was, um, pretty much a maintenance, it was a lot of work to maintain it. And, uh, basically volunteers were doing all the maintenance on it. Uh, a lot of corporate to trim and stuff like that. So anyway, I said, put together a committee, and after several meetings, um, and sharing ideas and everything, John Prang went to Bear Creek, got a proposal, and, and, uh, it came in a price tag. And I said allocated fifteen thousand dollars for the project. Um, then, after the fact, um, we found out that in order to separate the wiring for the streetlights, uh, from Robert Knapp's building, where the power was coming, coming off of, ever since that building was the, you know, the developer's sales office, um, we had to, in order to get the power and the irrigation over to the golf course side of the street, we had to do two borings under the street. And that was going to be an additional, minimum of an additional three thousand dollars. And I said that the city could probably come up with three thousand dollars. Now, it, you know, they finally, you know, actually, finally just got all the bills in for the electrical work and everything, and I don't think it came out to the full eighteen thousand. Danny gave me a itemized list of the project cost. Um, let me see if he's got the proposals in there. They have, the, the, for the wiring, the total was thirty-seven hundred and seventeen dollars. So they're asking the city if we could contribute two thousand towards the thirty-seven seventeen. I think it's reasonable since, um, the island is in super shape now and good for, you know, for another twenty-five years. So I would like, I would entertain a motion to, uh, cover this two thousand dollars for the district.
I think a motion we, uh, need the two thousand dollars is our part of the project.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Linda's seconded it, Ken made the motion, and Linda seconded it, any discussion?
I had a question on your email on that. It, it talked about some additional painting or something, what, what, what is, what's... You know what that is?
There was, there was something, there, there's still, you know, one more shoe to drop, I guess. Um, they want to paint the, uh, framework around the sign out front.
They don't like John Deere.
Yeah.
Be careful now, you know who painted that? Ken Brown and I did. Uh, no, I, I didn't.
There, the letter we're painting, we painted the Christmas trees with, so... I'm, I'm leaving that in the hands of I said. I don't pick, paint colors, I've learned my lesson on that one, I don't know.
I've heard.
But I think that there's a desire to paint it back to the brown to match the rest of the ironwork that's up there, that's on, on the stone walls. And, uh, that's not part of this project, that's not what this money is going for. If I said wants to repaint the framework up there, that, that's, um...
I, I just ordered, what, I mean, there was some illusion that something else was going to happen, and I didn't understand.
Yeah, there was just, that was it, it was painting the framework around the sign.
Yeah, that's, I would, I, we, since you're here, can I ask Bob a question?
Is it about this, then? Then we'll finish this up first. Uh, but I did have a question for Wes. Um, streetlights are obviously, um, um... You, we can spend street fund money on streetlights, right?
I think, I think Lanny said no.
We can't on the electricity to run them. But certainly, we can spend street fund money to, to provide streetlights.
So I don't know.
Um, I think we can, we'll, that will check that.
I thought I wrote that somewhere.
Yeah.
There was a whole list of things that...
I think, I think one of the things that...
I think I did.
In fact, I think that Tim Duncan's letter was one that said that, that specifically, we could spend the...
That was, and that, that decision from Hutchins, Hutchin, Hutchins, or...
Hutchins.
Said, you know, the whole list of things we could supposedly spend street money for.
If we, if we, if it's, if it's legitimate to spend, to use street fund money to do this, and I think it is, but we'll confirm that, that I would, uh, want this to be paid for on the street on the street.
I think because there's more cushion in the street fund money. I don't know. That would...
I, I wouldn't say.
That's not lights.
This is for wiring for the streetlights.
No, that was wiring for irrigation.
That's, that's not, the irrigation isn't electric.
Yeah, it is.
Not really for street...
Nothing sprinkler is.
What is, what's over the wires, there's something going over the wires. And you put, my irrigation system has electricity in it.
Well, this is, this is the wiring for the streetlights. It's the wires that are going through the tube, under the road, to the light poles. And it doesn't even cover all of the cost of that, so...
Well, um, I, I was going to ask Wes, that was one question, you know, if, do we have a budget for two thousand dollars in there? I mean, why, we didn't budget any money in the street fund for twenty twenty-one.
For twenty twenty-one?
The only thing that's budgeted in there was paving. So I think it would be a lot easier to put it in, out of the general. Pete, you're, you're not, you're next on the block, not me.
Well, my preference would be to take it out of the street fund, because it is street. Um, to me, it is directly related to, uh, streets and, and security.
You might have to amend the, amend the budget.
I guess we could check with the league.
I don't think you got it, you haven't got any.
Lanny isn't there this week, but he did call me, he's checking his messages.
Um, you, you, there's nothing budgeted for that in the street.
No.
Well, there's nothing budgeted for it in the general fund.
Be careful, there's some, some other things there that we could cover, probably, you know? I don't have to ask for budget.
I'd have enough money in the street fund for the project next year.
Yeah, that was before Jack Peet was called. If that was, if our, if our, if Santa Claus comes, then we have no problem. Santa Claus is...
All right, any more discussion? At least vote on approving it.
Okay. Wes can figure out where we are on that.
That's right. All in favor, say aye.
Okay, I was just going to say, if we're, uh, if we're just contributing two thousand dollars uh, to a project including landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, and streetlights, and product of these lights.
It's a median in the street, it ought to be covered.
Um, yeah, I think so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll, uh, we'll figure out which company it's going to come out of. And while we're talking about medians in the street, uh, the median on park, where you go into, uh, the shopping center, it's dark as night, at night. So, uh, it would appear as though the, uh, power to those streetlights has been cut off. I did ask Danny, uh, to look into that, um, because that's probably the next one that we, you know, we... We didn't, the, the one, the one up front by the main entrance, we didn't technically wrestle away from Tom, because he kind of walked away from that one a long time ago. But he has kind of expressed an interest in having control of the median up in the, um, up in the park yet, over the last few years.
Was that...
I said, did rewire the streetlights up there for him, uh, a couple of years ago, to go to LEDs. And it was a pretty extensive project to get him rewired. But if Tom... and it was a pretty extensive project to get him rewired, but if Tom is no longer maintaining that median or those streetlights, that's a very dangerous intersection without those streetlights at night.
Does he control the sand, the signage of businesses, those little row of.
I can't see how he controls anything.
That, that island, who does that belong to?
Well, that's what I asked Danny to get involved.
Because that, that wooden sign in there looks like.
To me, to me, this, this was, this was a HISA problem, but, you know, it's a problem that I passed on to Danny, but Tom believes he has ownership, yeah, it's what he told me, yeah.
How can he have ownership for that?
Who, who has ownership?
It's in the middle of the road.
Yeah, it's not a road, though. Well, Park, Park is a, well, it's, it's a park.
Anyway, I rotary gloves, is interested in fixing that sign.
Park, Park, I guess the place to start, you know, for HISA would be to find the records of what was dedicated to HISA and what wasn't. I know that Danny, that Kenny has been carrying Park Drive on the HISA list of streets that he maintains, and we are on a regular basis catching the pothole right on the intersection of Park and whatever the one is that goes over to the post office, that little center of that intersection is constantly sinking away, and it's probably going to have to be major repair one of these days, but in my opinion, and it's not a city issue, but in my opinion, if the street, if Park Drive was dedicated to the district, I don't, I'm like Ken, I don't see how you could dedicate a street and not dedicate the median.
The median is.
But Danny is on top of it, and Bob's going to help him.
Ken?
I just think we need the lights turned back on. All right, that is the last agenda item, so we'll move on to public comments, any, any public comments from Bob?
No. How come?
I was going to say something on the VOC's behalf, I don't know what it was anymore, I was going to give you credit for something, but I don't remember what it was.
I would do that.
Maybe all the good work of previous chairperson. Is Suzanne going to keep doing the monthly district manager report?
I don't know.
The.
I hope so.
A longstanding tradition that you started?
I think it's, I think it's beneficial.
I think, I think everybody appreciated it, so I encourage her to do that. Councilmember comments? All right, moving on to scheduling, regular meeting?
January eighteen, six P M, Tuesday night.
January sixteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Ken suggested, and I think it's a good idea, to have a workshop in January to establish some goals and objectives for two thousand twenty-two, everybody kind of think that's a good idea?
Yes.
Yeah.
We want to pick a date for that?
Where is Tuesday at, at the planning commission?
The.
That would be about.
Yes, the July, the planning commission.
Pick a day other Tuesday, or? We, the first two Tuesdays of the month are gone, so that, you know, I don't think.
Thursday, thirteenth?
Thirteenth is what?
So Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, the thirteenth is a Thursday.
One o'clock, Tuesday?
I don't think we need to do the ninth.
No.
Oh, is that, that might be early.
January thirtieth or.
One, Brian? Okay. Feed me your thoughts on that, and I'll try to put together an agenda.
Again.
All right, my gosh.
Good clip here that we had.
This would be a record short city council meeting if we can get a motion.
We have everything that we have to do.
We have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Ken seconded it, Jerry made a motion to adjourn, Ken seconded it, and Linda is pondering something. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned? All right, so I got to redo the ones I have to redo.
Well, that's what I wanted to make sure I didn't have mixed up, that was.
That one I had to redo.
And the next one.
Yeah, those are the only two.